All right, we'll go right into roll call if we can.
Vice Mayor Dick G.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Spaulding.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Speak.
Here.
Mayor Chris Howard.
Here.
Thank you, Carol. Before we get to the approval of minutes, I just want to make everybody aware, I'm going to move a couple of the resolutions around. I just want to hit this before we get into the approval, number five approval minutes. We're going to move the appointment of the School System Viability Committee and the appointment of the municipal judge to the end of the program, so they'll actually take G and H's spot, because I think the other things, we can get through pretty quick before we get there, if there's no objection to that. All right, thank you. Next, we'll have approval of the minutes. You should have three sets of minutes, December 30th, January 9th, and January 27th, which means we're up to date. Thank you, Carol. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review those without objection. House deemed them approved. We don't have to vote on that, right?
No, you do not.
All right.
As long as there's no changes or anything.
Anybody speak once, twice, sold. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' opportunity to address the council. Let me please remind you that it's a three-minute limit each. Please step to podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Dunn?
Always.
Awesome.
Dunn and O'Neal, I don't have a chair to you. I'd like to commend the council. I've been to three workshops, and you handle issues very well. Pro, con, point, counterpoint, give and take, and that is the way you do issues. Now, I'd like to say, are we going to have a referendum as such about the schools after the recommendation from the panel? Is it legal?
Am I allowed to answer, or not? Or do you want to answer?
It doesn't matter. I'll be glad to answer the question. If you get to that point, yes, you are, because a referendum is required for the creation of a school district, and then a referendum election is also required almost simultaneously for any members of any school board that you would have. So those are two items that would require an election, and it would have to be submitted to the Hamilton County Election Commission a certain amount of time in advance of the election for that to occur.
Against bonding?
Yes.
And I'd like to say, too, I don't think we necessarily will ask the committee for a recommendation per se. We're going to ask them to do fact-finding, and it won't go to referendum unless this council votes that it should move forward. So I think we're a long way from that right now.
Wait a minute. The council has to recommend a referendum?
Correct.
Yes.
Council cannot approve the school district on its own. We'd have to recommend it to go to referendum.
Okay.
Is that correct, Phil?
Good enough. Fair enough.
Yes. People have to vote.
Thank you, Dunn. Anyone else?
Appreciate the compliments.
Yeah.
That's nice.
It's a new day.
I'm Wendy Morgan, and I live on James Boulevard, and you've seen me before. A little while ago, I came to you about the problem of speeding on James Boulevard, and it's still a problem. I have talked to the police department, I have talked to you about it, I've talked to my neighbors, my neighbors have come to talk to me about it, and it's an issue. And everybody behind me is probably saying it's an issue in my neighborhood, too. So I will agree it's an issue all over Signal Mountain. But I would say James Boulevard is unique in that we have a lot of traffic, and we have more pedestrian traffic than I know of any other road on Signal Mountain. Maybe you know, you can correct me on that if I'm wrong. I work at home, my husband works at home. We see the kind of traffic that's going in front of our house all day long, and it's scary. I'm getting to the point where I'm afraid to walk my baby to, from my house to the library, or even my children. I cannot put my back to the traffic without having to look behind me when I hear somebody barreling down on us to make sure that they see us, or that they're looking, they're not texting. I understand that Mr. Veal, you're working on some things for James Boulevard, but I also want to make some recommendations. One is something that Walden just established, or just put on the road going, before you get to W Road, I think that's Anderson, they put one of these speed reader signs. I think it's such a simple thing to do. It's about $3,500. They told me how much theirs cost. I've done the research. There's a wonderful speed limit sign that you can mount it to, real close to my house between the library and Thrasher Elementary. There's also one by the golf course. Those are the two spots that I see. Major spots of speeding, and also very scary spots because of how close the sidewalk is to the road. The other thing that would be a real simple thing to do are these things at the crosswalks. They are mounted on the road, they're all over Chattanooga, and they're a great reminder that this is a residential road, there are walkers all over this place. These are about $400 each. They're reboundable, so if somebody hits them, which they're bound to, they're not going to break off. And I can see that being a very pertinent thing at the library, at Coffin, and also at Thrasher. And the last thing, which is probably the most controversial thing, but the rumble strips would be a nice thing to do on the sidewalk side of James to keep people, as they run off the road, to remind them to stay in their lane and not get so close to the sidewalk. I have seen people run off the road in front of me, my husband has, my neighbor across the street has. People text, or they talk on their cellphone, or they turn around and get on to their kids while they're driving, and they run off the road. And it's very dangerous for us. The last thing I would like to ask for is just more people being pulled over. I mean, I don't like to be pulled, nobody likes to be pulled over, but it's a fact of life, we're not policing ourselves. I would like to ask you to please help people on James take James as seriously as they take Tach Highway. And I think it deserves more attention than it's getting right now.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is there, I know it happens regularly, but is there a more specific time that it's an issue than others, in your mind?
I mean, I'd like to say, yes, you know, I mean, there's more traffic in the morning and in the afternoon, but they're speeding all throughout the day, and at night. You know, I see the cars go very fast at night, but I'm like, well, okay, there's no walkers out there, most likely, so just have at it at night. But during the day, when there's walkers all throughout, all times of the day, I just would not say pinpoint. I mean, there's just more traffic during, you know, morning hours and afternoon, but there's walkers all throughout the day on James Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it appropriate to, for you to comment on some of the actions we may be looking at at this point, or should we wait on it?
I'd be happy to, if you don't mind.
If you don't mind. I think it's an important issue to a lot of folks.
The police department has been working James Boulevard more. Interestingly enough, the sign that you mentioned, I just got a quote in today that I'd requested from the company, on a U.S. Communities Cooperative Contract, we can get them a little cheaper than that, but they are right around $3,000. Also looked at similar signs, I don't know if you've been on Shackelford Ridge, there's a stop sign there that has LEDs that blink. You can, you can get speed limit signs that do the same thing, that simply call people's attention to the speed limit sign that we can kind of get blind to after a while, so we've gotten a quote on that in today as well. So those are very much along the lines of what you're talking about, we have begun looking into and getting prices on.
So that's something that you can take action on without the council's involvement?
Yes.
Because this was the second time we had a mention of that on the agenda meeting last time, we spoke about a feedback sign, so is that something that we could say is in the works in 30 days, 60 days?
I don't know. Literally, just got the quote in today. Haven't met with Loretta on it, look and see what we have in the budget, and what we can do and how quickly we can move. The quote did have a lead time on it, but I don't remember what it was. It was a few weeks it would take us to get the signs if we ordered them, so we, again, just got that information in today.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, is there any way you can consider the crosswalks, too? Because I mean...
Yeah, we'll look at those, too.
I mean, they're just not stopping for people at crosswalks.
Four weeks from Saturday. Four weeks.
Thank you.
Just, I know...
Not the blinking ones, but the speed limit?
Either, either one.
Either one.
Dan, I know this is just extending it, and this isn't intended to be a long conversation about this, but I hope we'll also, I'd really like to hear from citizens also, on down James where Shackelford hits. It just seems like the obvious place for a roundabout to slow that down, because the cross...
Five points?
The five points, yeah. Where, but people may not want it, and I would like to know, maybe you guys have even discussed that in the past, so if anybody wants to email me just to say what general faults are on it. But those crosswalks are, they're there, and it's still really fast to cross, in particular because people come off of Shackelford.
Timberlins.
Timberlins. Of Timberlins, at that point. Come off Timberlins really quickly. It's hard to get out of Texas, and it's hard to get out of the extension of James that goes on down.
Well, if those bushes on either side grow up, it's a lot...
It's really tough, yeah.
You know, we have two of those signs in operation today, the speed limit signs on, because we did, we've had to deal with this before. Do we have any sense that they have any impact?
Nothing, Congress.
There's no data.
We've done, we've done traffic studies before, during, and after, and you see very little change. We've been doing a good deal of work over there already. I had some statistics here that I had shared with her earlier, that the last time she had called in, actually Sergeant Foster was over there doing a traffic study that morning, and from 8:54 to 9:33, he clocked 54 vehicles. The average speed was 31.3 miles per hour. It had a high of 39 and a low of 23 miles per hour. The second session was from 9:20 to 9:33. He clocked 46 vehicles. The average was 32.7, with a high of 43 and a low of 24. So he had 100 vehicles, basically, and the average...
Is it 25 there?
It's 30.
30.
The average speed of the 100 vehicles was 32 miles an hour with a high of 43 and one low of 24. And 43 is too fast.
It's 43 that'll get you.
It'll get you. And it did that time, too. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to repeat, you didn't show that to me, I'm sorry. Oh, no, you showed that to me.
Was that, maybe a different...
No, I was bored, yeah, I thought you showed that to me.
Okay. It was another lady, my bad. It's the lady, her name is...
Is that Amabile?
Barbara Amabile?
Lovely.
Sorry.
It's okay. A lovely lady.
Okay, sorry. I thought it was her. But we did share it with the lady that was, had other concerns. So we have been out there a lot. We are out there a lot all the time. But as you know, we've got three officers when we're full, most days we have two, and we have 65.3 miles of roads in the town, and everybody wants us to slow folks down. So we do the best we can, but we can't be there all the time, so...
That's where I was going, that's where I was going with that question. I just, you know, this is the last non-invasive solution, or potential solution to this problem. What is the next step? I mean, what...
The other thing, the other side of the coin, too, is when we stop a lot of cars, or we stop in a specific area, I get calls complaining that we're there being harassed, and we're picking on them, and they were only doing so-and-so, and why did we stop their son? So there's, it's a double-edged sword with oversaturating an area as well.
I don't think that's the solution at all. There's got to be something there that's full-time, real-time, and interactive, and I don't know what that is.
Well, I think if Mr. Veal's talking about the one that I forwarded you on the signs today, was it, or was that a different one?
He sent me one on some similar products.
Okay, similar. So I've been doing the same thing as far as research on trying to get some signage information as well, and forwarding it on up.
Didn't one of the signs, or maybe it's the local unit, didn't also have the capability to track and gather data?
We're using that one. It doesn't show now, it doesn't show us the sign, but it does traffic in for Public Works, for Loretta, in another area that's over there close, so that they can do a traffic study and try to determine. We had some that do, portables that do display sign, but they're pretty old, and they're not working, and we've been trying to get them fixed, and it's outrageous how much it costs to get them fixed.
I understand.
The signs we're looking at do collect data as well, so that would be another benefit to those.
So it has been a priority, and we have been over there a lot, but...
Can I ask?
Sure.
When you were talking about the times, and I run on James Boulevard, so I'm very aware of what you're talking about, but what, I also live in Hidden Brook, and I would love to see around that 2:30 timeline when the high school's getting out, because that's the cut-through, and you see a ton of speeders up Hidden Brook Lane, and they cut through James, then they go flying down. So I would, I'm going to guess that that you'll probably, I would love to see your traffic numbers maybe around that time, because I think you've probably got a lot of moms coming from drop-off or going a little slower.
It makes, it makes it a little more difficult at that time, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
That's okay.
Because it shift-change, and it's also school traffic, and now that we don't have an SRO, he's not over there, so we're having to put officers over there to do Thrasher traffic, and some at Nolan occasionally, but mostly Thrasher, which cuts us down to another officer. So it makes it hard, we're spread thin as far as, but I'll make a note of that, we'll try to get a study over there on 100 cars or so as well.
We can put the traffic box over there for, for that period of time.
We just have to leave...
How long do you want to leave it?
Thrasher gets out at 3:15, right?
Okay. We should be in the next couple of weeks, be able to move it over there.
Yeah.
So, Phil, what I'm hearing is we're about four weeks from being able to come to some sort of solution, or act.
If we were to decide to order some of those signs, we're looking at about four weeks for delivery, so...
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yes.
I'm sorry, anybody else?
No.
Thank you, chief.
I have one more question, because I mean, you took a lot from me.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just say one thing? Thank you for doing the traffic study. I would just like to say that I think, you know, we do allow for speeding. I think officers just typically allow for a certain amount over the speed limit on James. 30 is what it should be, and when you're walking and you feel anything above 30, you feel it, you know that it's not safe. It's easy to get to 40 when you're driving and not think a thing about it, but when you're walking beside a car that's going 40 behind you, and you're not sure if they're texting, or it's on the clock on their phone, you feel it. So I'm just, I've been told by an officer that there is some leverage given to people on James to allow us to speed so much, and I think it's too much. And I know that that's not the major solution. I think the signage is great, and I think that's, I'm encouraging that, too, but I do think the officers need to enforce 30 on James.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Coming once, going twice? All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda are our resolutions. As I mentioned before, we're going to move items C and F back to the end, and now we get to do some, what I would call enjoyable resolutions here for two gentlemen who have served the town for several years and given back to the community in a, not thankless, it's rewarding at many levels, but many years of service. What I'm going to do is, that's not me, that's not me. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read both these resolutions honoring both Bill Wallace and Bill Lusk, and then we'll come up and have pictures after I read both of them, if that's acceptable. Resolution number 2017-04, resolution honoring Bill Wallace for his service on the Signal Mountain Town Council. Whereas Bill Wallace served the town of Signal Mountain for six years as a valuable member of the Signal Mountain Town Council, and whereas during his tenure on the town council, Bill Wallace held the position of vice mayor for two years, and whereas Bill Wallace also provided excellent service to the town and its citizens as an appointed member of the Signal Mountain Planning Commission, where he demonstrated and advocated a commitment to protecting the charm and character of our community, and whereas Bill Wallace faithfully performed the duties of his office, selflessly dedicated countless hours to help ensure the continued prosperity and fiscal stability of the town while striving to improve the quality of life afforded its citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town council, by the town council of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee, that Vice Mayor Bill Wallace is honored and commended for his excellent public service to our community, and be it further resolved by the town council of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee, that a tree shall be planted in the town park to commemorate and honor the dedicated service of Vice Mayor Bill Wallace.
Sure do.
Can I go ahead and do a motion?
Yeah, I need to get a motion of approval.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll read the next one, then we'll do the official handing off of the good-looking certificates we have here. Resolution number 217-05, a resolution honoring Bill Lusk for his service on the Signal Mountain Town Council. Whereas Bill Lusk served the town of Signal Mountain for 10 years as a valuable member of Signal Mountain Town Council, and whereas during his tenure on the town council, Bill Lusk served as mayor for six years, representing the town of Signal Mountain with sincerity and dignity, and whereas Bill Lusk has been a tireless advocate for the town as an executive board member for the Chattanooga-Hamilton County North Georgia Transportation Planning and Organization, Planning Organization, and whereas Bill Lusk has faithfully performed the duties of his office, selflessly dedicating countless hours to help ensure the continued prosperity and fiscal stability of the town while striving to improve the quality life afforded its citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town council of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee, that Mayor Bill Lusk is honored and commended for his excellent public service to our community, and be it further resolved by the town council of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee, that a tree shall be planted in a town park to commemorate and honor the dedicated service of Mayor Bill Lusk. If you, both gentlemen can come up and...
No, 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 that's right. Have a motion, a second.
So move. Second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. All right.
We don't go there. I'm new, eh?
We want all...
I think you have to plan.
Whichever you want.
You probably want the previous one.
What? Thanks.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for everything.
Is that, is that squeeze the...
Yeah, I saw one.
Yeah, they should do it. Give it to them. Yeah, the old days are beautiful. You should, you know, it was done.
My small...
Oh, never hot. That's why the valley is steep, because it always goes directly. I might call over the place.
That's always fun.
Mm-hmm.
And just, just to close out on that, on a personal note, I very much respect both gentlemen, and both helped me as I started in two years ago, and I very much appreciate that. Thank you all very much.
I'd like to echo that same thing. I learned a lot from working with these two guys, so thank you for your time.
All right, that's the fun stuff. Now on to business, business. Next, we'll handle item D, which is appointment of condemnation board. Resolution number 2017-07, a resolution appointing Judy Ikas, did I get that right? Ikas as a member of the town of Signal Mountains condemnation board, be it resolved by the town council of the town of Signal Mountains, Tennessee, that Judy Ikas be appointed to condemnation board with a term expiring December 31st, 2017.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have appointment to the beautification committee. Resolution 207-2017-08, a resolution appointing Lois Baird as members, as member of the Signal Mountain Beautification Subcommittee of the Town of Signal Mountain Citizens Advisory Committee.
Move for approval. Second.
Second.
Second, and we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think there's an extra S on that one, Carol, just so you know.
But you didn't change it, so it'll go in the middle.
I'm sorry. We don't need to go back to it, right? Next, item G, authorizing purchase of 2017 Chevrolet 2500 HD truck. Resolution number 2017-10, a resolution authorizing the town manager to purchase one 2017 Chevrolet 2500 HD truck. I'm assuming that's heavy-duty. Tennessee State Bid Number 40032 from Wilson County Motors LLC, Lebanon, Tennessee, for a total amount not to exceed $30,622.30. Yeah, dollars, sorry. To be used by the Parks and Recreation Department for the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee.
This is a replacement?
Yes.
This is replacing a vehicle during the budget process, we council decided to replace a standard duty, which would be like an F-150, we're going to replace it with an F-250. It just happens to be a Chevrolet 2500, so that they're better equipped to pull solid trailers, equipment, and such as that. So it is replacing a vehicle, but it's a little heavier.
The beautification committee is going to identify.
That's it.
Is this, we discussed this at the end of the meeting, did we, that knew it was going to be on here, or no?
I mean it.
Start.
I don't, I don't recall if we discussed that, I don't believe so.
Okay.
It says a vehicle replacement fund.
It is, it is on the schedule, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion, me. Second.
Second, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have item H, authorizing, resolution 2017-11, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with Hamilton County, by which Hamilton County agrees to waive assessment of all costs associated with the 2017 reappraisals to those parcels of real property located within town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee pursuant to TCA Section 67-5, 1601, Section C2. This is, Bo, why don't you give us a little background on what this is and what we did?
This year, the county assessor contacted all of the municipalities and indicated that they would be required to pay one-half of the cost of the reappraisals for all of the parcels within their respective municipalities. State law dictates that that is the practice absent an agreement with, between the county and the municipalities, even though that it had never been required in the past. So we have implored a county commission to enter into such an agreement. Hopefully, we will be doing so on a more protracted basis, but at least they have offered this agreement for this reappraisal cycle, so we will not have to bear any of the cost of those reappraisals.
There were several communities, obviously, very upset about this, and Bo jumped on it and pursued it to the end, and to what I think is a good starting resolution. Hopefully, we can sign a longer-term agreement to waive those costs, because it's really kind of double-hitting you.
But it only applies to the, to the current cycle.
Correct.
2017.
So it's...
That's... Bo and I attended the county commission meeting, which, what date was that?
I don't know.
Probably two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago, and it was hotly discussed, and they came out with this to satisfy all
the communities, so, but thank you for your work on this.
There was some leaning on the, on the county commission for a longer-term agreement, so I think we at least have an opportunity to continue the discussions.
There was a couple leanings on the county commission not to do it as well, from what I saw.
The impact on the budget would be, what would we say, 60,000?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
the parcels within their respective municipalities. State law dictates that that is the practice absent an agreement with, between the county and the municipalities, even though that it had never been required in the past. So we have implored a county commission to enter into such an agreement. Hopefully, we will be doing so on a more protracted basis, but at least they have offered this agreement for this reappraisal cycle, so we will not have to bear any of the cost of those reappraisals.
There were several communities obviously very upset about this, and Bo jumped on it and pursued it to the end into what I think is a good starting resolution. Hopefully, we can sign a longer-term agreement to waive those costs because it's really kind of double-hitting you.
But it only applies to the current cycle.
Correct.
2017.
That's. Bo and I attended the county commission meeting, which, what date was that? Probably two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, and it was hotly discussed, and they came out with this to satisfy all the communities, so. But thank you for your work on this.
There was some leaning on the county commission for a longer-term agreement, so I think we at least have an opportunity to continue the discussions.
There was a couple leanings on the county commission not to do it as well, from what I saw.
The impact on the budget would be, what would we say, $60,000?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand dollars.
Twenty-six, but then they're also talking about $5,000 ongoing on off-years to charge this, so we'll have to get right back on this for next year.
On off-years?
Yeah. I don't think they have quite the leg to stand on in off-years, but it's kind of a maintenance, didn't they call it a maintenance fee type thing?
They look at some of the parcels throughout the cycle, and then come back and do an overall reappraisal. So they construed the law that the work they do in off-years is also applicable.
And it's tough to, you know, they have an equation to get to why it's $26,000, it's a little tougher in the off-years. Can I get a motion? This is pretty straightforward. Do you want to sign?
I'll move. Second.
We have a first and a second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Resolution passes. Now we'll jump back to resolution 2017-06, a resolution appointing Susan Sparrow, John Friedel, Tom McCullough, Tom Peterson, Charles Spencer, Amy Joakim, and Melissa Wood to the Town of Signal Mountain School System Viability Committee. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Discussion?
Yes. So we spent a lot of time on this, obviously, and I'm still leaning towards being what I suspect will be the sole dissenting vote on this, and it's not because we've included someone who stated on their application that they specifically favor forming a school district, which we did, it's because we didn't, in so doing, choose someone who specifically was against it as well. As we stated from the beginning, our purpose was to try to put together something unbiased. And just kind of quickly going over what we did, there were only three people who submitted applications who said they were against it. It was, and it was Jeff Parker, James Pratt, and Eric Goddard. There were three people who stated they were specifically for it, Casey Rigsby, Robert Hensley, and Tom McCullough. We've chosen two people also who were on the ad hoc committee to begin with, to be on this committee, Casey Rigsby and Amy Joakim.
Casey Rigsby is not on there.
Is not?
No.
I put her on the wrong list. I apologize. So just, I'll take one tick off of my column in that, but it feels like we're leaning towards it, I mean, just by sheer numbers, that we're probably moving in that direction. And I'll state again, I'm not, it might be a good idea, but the situation we find ourselves in with the hall tax and with budget and everything else that's going to be involved in this, voters are going to tend to be against anything that's going to cause a tax increase.
So.
If it does.
Yeah, that's why we're forming a committee. We don't know that it's going to be a tax increase.
Could go the other way.
Want to bet? It just.
Not betting, that's why we got a committee.
May I say this, though? While I can appreciate what you're saying, especially when you are zeroing in on Mr. McCullough, if you read the rest of his application, he does say he's for it, but then he gives a very detailed explanation, and I actually talked to him on the phone about his position because I was worried that he said, "I'm for it." And by the end of my conversation, I felt very strong that he was neutral, but thinks the idea in theory would be good. Not that he is for forming Signal Mountain as their own school district, but as having local control and having your own school district is in general a good idea. He is for that, for exploring it. That was my understanding, talking to him.
I trust these folks, and the other question were, can you look at this with open eyes and be unbiased? And I didn't find anybody that said they couldn't, and that's, I'm going to trust them on some level with that. That's just my opinion. I think, I think we potentially lose a lot of work and a lot of experience if that is the issue, but somebody who was actually superintendent of two small school systems in Georgia and has been part of HDC, CE, had somebody with a lot of inside knowledge. So I just, you know, I know Tom, he is a good, good guy. He's a stand-up guy, and I think he'll come to a fair resolution, given the facts.
Yeah, my point wasn't that he wasn't a good guy, it's that we're trying to have an unbiased committee, and good guys make really good consultants as well to a committee as they're trying to get information, so. And that's really all I'm going to say, it's just.
I appreciate it.
I'm concerned that we have the appearance of a slam dunk, that this is a go.
Well, I don't, I don't. I'm not, I'm not going to back this until they answer two or three very serious questions on my mind, having to do with budget, having to do with can we incorporate everybody on the mountain? Because I can't move forward if we can't, if we exclude anybody, and.
I would like to add on the positive side. We were at the top of almost everyone's list, unless people go back and hear it, was Charles Spencer, who is, I forget who it was originally who stated it, but economics is considered to be the dismal science. And that's his thing, and I had a conversation with him just this weekend, and he's really serious about looking at the numbers.
Very capable.
Yeah.
Any other, are you done? I'm sorry. Any other comments?
Apart from the individuals, and I don't, maybe this isn't the time to talk about it, but when do we establish a directive? And to what, you know, what kind of governance do we apply, if any, and what kind of relationship exists between this committee and town council?
If it, if this passes, I have some thoughts of ideas, and we kind of have, I think, a game plan, or at least a timeline, not a game plan in place for it to move forward. But I think we need, if it passes, we pass it, select a liaison from the council, then we have to have a meeting with what I would say would be Phil in that liaison, and I'd like to be there. All their meetings have to be public.
So are we going to do that the next?
Well, I think we can talk about it after we pass it, can't we? Or not?
We can talk about it. We want to. I just wondered, if you want to talk about that tonight?
Yeah, I think we could.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I don't want to get too deep into it if it's, if we're not, if it doesn't go.
I'm ready to vote.
I feel the committee is balanced, and I'm ready to vote.
Me too.
We have a motion and a second, and after discussion, we're looking for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nope.
Okay. Motion passes four to one, or resolution, sorry. Thought process was, I think the next thing we have to do is pick a liaison for the committee. And then I'd like to kind of give my thoughts on how we should move forward. If you want to talk about that now, we can, or we can do another business. What do you all prefer?
We can do it now.
Okay. Well, if we're picking a liaison from the committee, I would like to nominate Amy speak if she'll take it because she has kids in the school system, not only on Signal Mountain. I think you have a daughter that goes to one of the magnet schools?
I did. She transferred to Signal this year.
And she's very involved with the schools. I just, I, she has less committees than anybody else, and I think she'd be excellent at handling it. So I'd make a motion that we.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Would we like discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have that. The thought process was, and I think we set a, I've been working with both Phil and Boyd, is Saturday, we've contacted the applicant Saturday at 2:00, is that the time? We're going to have a meeting with Phil and the committee. First of all, to explain sunshine laws, what they can and can't do, when they meet. I think Amy needs to get some ideas and thoughts on direction for the committee, what we're looking at, give them some homework, you know, maybe the Bartlett study or whatever, and go through, you know, picking a chairman, vice chairman of that committee, and a secretary, just so we have some sort of leadership on there, and then talking about when they want to have their meetings and set them, because I think they need to be very public. I think we need to invite the public, post them ahead of time, and invite people to these meetings as they work through these things. So we get those things done at this Saturday meeting, and then I've talked to Mayor Roberts down in Red Bank. The ad hoc committee, who has contacted me, would like to lay out everything in a joint session of both Red Bank and Signal, so they don't have to do it twice. So the thought process is, if the committee okay's it, and it's Amy's directive through them, would be the following Saturday then, to have a couple-hour meeting where the ad hoc committee lays out their full report, their budget, all the backup, and starts answering questions for that committee, so they're prepared to go ahead and then answer the questions that we have coming in through email, set up a system and narrow it down to the questions that everybody has and answer. I strongly suggest that everyone on this council lists their questions, and let's get it to, get it to them either before or during that meeting. That's just my thought process on it. It can obviously go any other way, whatever all we suggest, but I think I wanted to kind of get some sort of direction for the first two meetings, just so we didn't limbo, here's the committee, and not give them any direction. But I really think they need to spend some time with Phil and the sunshine issue, so we can make these as public as possible, get as much input as possible. Just my comments. Anybody else?
I'd like to ask Phil a question.
Sure.
If we want to attend those, not as a liaison, is that an issue, since this is something that's going to come up for deliberation?
As long as these are public meetings and there is no deliberation of you as a council member, that is not an issue.
Sure.
You're entitled to be able to see that process go on. I don't think that's an issue.
Excellent.
Any votes on any items here will have to occur during public meetings, and any discussion towards a topic here will have to occur during a public meeting.
Yeah, it's, addressing what you said, I think that we don't even know what the questions are going to be until some of the questions are answered, and it would be nice to see this process unfold.
Sure.
I would encourage Amy to have them meet at least twice a month.
I can do that.
Because for the amount of work they're going to have to do, they kind of have to do a lot of it together in the same room because of the sunshine laws, and we'd rather have that process pulled out like that. I think they need to be, come into us once a month during the agenda meeting and just kind of give us updates.
Well, I was, I was going to ask if.
Is that too awesome?
I don't know. I don't, I'm struggling a little bit with just how, what the distance is between this body and that body, to make sure that there is no sense, no perception, that they're being directed one way or the other. I mean, just to address, Dan, what you're concerned about. And I think if we have too many meetings, somebody could get that idea, too many updates. So, but.
But I think with the.
Why don't you determine with the committee, what you think's necessary? I just, I know I want to be kept, I'm going to try to attend as many as I can, but I know I want to be kept up to date on this. It's such an important issue.
Yeah, I just think they have so many questions to answer and so much, at least, and again, we'll meet with the committee and determine that, but I think in order for them to even start, we've got to at least start with two times a month and see where they get. This could be dead in the water, you know, in four meetings. They could lay it out, and the financials don't make sense, and it could be done. I'd rather get to that, that part of the answer instead of dragging it out.
Yeah, and I think people are going to be very surprised with the amount of work and amount of information that are going to be provided by this ad hoc committee, and I think that'll probably answer a significant number of the questions, which then hopefully will focus it down to four or five big questions that need to be answered.
I would like to add.
I think there's, I'm sorry.
Good. I was just going to say, I want to kind of back up a little bit. My thoughts on this, too, are, and I think we're in agreement, but I want to get it out on the table, to not ask for a recommendation from the committee. I think this committee, in order to be neutral, is about fact-finding and answering questions, and then laying it out, and then we, as a council, will decide whether or not this is something we move forward. And I just want to make sure we're all in agreement, that this is not them coming to say, "Yes, this is a good idea, no, this is a good idea." It's, here's what happens if we do it, and here's how it happens, and we make the decision.
That's kind of why I asked everybody to read the Bartlett study, because I really think we need, this is such an important issue and decision, that we, we need to be very educated and study upon this ourselves.
I've read it.
I hope my highlighting is good.
No, it's helpful.
It's a lot of highlighting.
Any other questions or comments? We okay with all that?
I think it will evolve. We'll just, we'll just have to see, see what happens.
Who is going to be the town's liaison to this committee?
We'll begin in that position, more to go from there, but I'll.
My guess is we're going to need Carol's expertise extensively as well for the financial piece.
Yes.
Just throwing it out there.
Just, if you don't mind, for the record, now that the committee has been seated, tomorrow we will post and advertise the meeting for Saturday.
It was 2:00?
Yes.
And where's it going to be? Right here?
Probably here.
Okay. And I'll get with.
All right, 2:00.
I'll get with John Roberts and give him your contact information, so you can discuss with him the following Saturday's meeting.
And there was joint meetings?
Did you think?
Or is just the one that you?
They have expressed, and John, Mayor Roberts has expressed to me that he would like our committees to meet every once in a while to share information. He thought that that would, you know, comparing information, in fact, finding would be helpful to both parties. I think the ad hoc committee wants to lay everything out one time for everybody, so there's no confusion on the facts, and I think they have information that's not totally specific to Signal and not totally specific to Red Bank, that gets both parties started, and he was looking forward to that. But I, he wanted the committees, you know, maybe the chairs can talk, and if they think it's the best idea to meet together every month, every other month, or whatever, and chair notes, and fine. I have no problem with that, I have no problem with that unless somebody else has a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, you have a lot of things to work out on people, what other folks can do, but is there potentially a problem with this meeting not having enough notice if it is public, or is this one not public?
This one is public.
This one Saturday?
Just an orientation session for people.
Every one of their meetings, I think we need to require every single one of their meetings needs to be public and posted. I want that.
Even, even special meetings for council only require 24 hours' notice. For some public hearings and things, you have to have more notice, but this, until the committee was seated, we weren't in a position to give notice, so tomorrow will be the earliest opportunity to give that notice, and it'll be about five days in advance of the meeting, so.
There is.
If council feels otherwise, I think we're fine.
And I'm sorry, Bo, there is one issue that I would like to take out of the committee's hands and put in our attorney's hands, because I think it needs to be kind of behind closed doors types deal with our attorney, and that's the issue on land and the buildings. I think that's not, that becomes a legal, flat-out, just legal question, and I think we need to prepare ourselves in case something happens.
Because we could be sued.
Correct.
As they were.
Is that, is that your opinion, Phil? I mean, is that a closed meeting sort of thing?
Well, I'm not sure what closed meetings you're referring to. I could surely give advice to this body if it's involving a potential of litigation in a matter. If there might get to the point, and we think that we might get to the point of litigation between us and the Hamilton County Department of Education over buildings or land, then that's clearly one of those issues.
And that's why. I just, I think if that's done and open, you're basically laying out your strategy if, if it comes to that.
Well, we can wait until we get to that point, too. We don't need to be making those decisions right now.
It's not an issue that they're going to be able to answer, in my mind. It's, it becomes a, in my, accurate on that, Phil, or not?
You're accurate, and people may vary in their opinions as to whether there is an ability to require folks to be able to donate land, or whether that land has already been paid for by the tax dollars of.
Sure. And that's, so I think we can take, at any time, we can take them that question. They'll have more than enough to handle, but I think right now we need to kind of pull that out and us have a, just be, have a, get counsel from our council.
Sure. Amy and I just went to Elected Officials Academy, and that was sort of a scared straight sort of thing.
Good.
I would rather err on the side of not going to jail.
Good. Any other discussion on that issue? Thank you. Good. Let's move on to the last item, which is the appointment of a municipal. Let's move on to the last item, which is the appointment of a municipal, should actually say municipal and sessions judge, because it's joint. I'd like to open up discussion, because I have nine resolutions sitting in front of me here, one with everybody's name who was interested in it. Is it nine, or eight?
Eight.
Eight. And I think we got stuck, we got stuck, and it was actually my, my motion, and after going back and studying it, was incorrect, but we got stuck on the pro tem. And I went back to the charter and our rules and regs.
Municipal code.
Municipal code. And it is evident that pro tem does not apply in this circumstance, in my opinion. It talks about a judge going on vacation, or, you know, references he's sick, and he's going to be, but he's going to return at some point. And I think it's very clear in the charter that it, our power and what it asks us to do is to replace that judge if, if he's going to retire or leave office on a more permanent basis. So I think comparing the two, it's evident that pro tem does not fit in there. With that said, I think the real, where we got stuck in the conversation was the placeholder nomenclature, if you will. As I made you aware a couple meetings ago, and I said Bo and I would work on getting a list together, and we went to the agenda meeting, had the discussions, we met with Phil prior to that meeting, and I think this body needs to determine if that nomenclature or someone at least verbally agreeing to be a placeholder is important in this process. To me, it made absolute sense when Phil and Boyd explained it to me, because of the favoritism towards incumbents or people in the office in a, in a regular election for judges. It's just overwhelming the data. So the thought process was, we want to find somebody who's willing to be a placeholder for the next year and a half to two years, and would at least give us the verbal that they would not run, in an effort to have the most wide open possible race and free choice of our citizens come 2018, when we have to hold a special election to fill the final four years of Judge Rothberger's term. So I'd kind of like to put to the council, is that direction we want to go? Am I, like, somebody make a motion to say, yes, we want to do that, or at least, no?
I would say yes. I don't know why this is even up for debate. We, it needs to be up to the citizens to decide who the judge is. This is a, placeholder is just a word. This is an interim judge. This is a temporary position, so that in actual election, our citizens can decide. We should not be deciding a judge that has a decisive advantage. That's, to me, that's not our place.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
You got, Eric?
Can we...
You need to make a motion.
Yes.
I make a motion that we decide our interim judge as an interim.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and second. Do we need to reword that, or is that okay? We have a first and a second. Do we need to reword that, or does that make sense to you?
You've got a first and a second as it is worded.
Okay.
Can you read it, please, then?
To decide on an interim judge as an interim.
Do you mind?
Phil, can you explain interim?
Let me go back to a little bit of law part here, maybe that'll help you in this process. We have a provision in our charter that talks about the election and qualifications of the town judge, and lists all the requirements that one has to meet. It has a provision in there that says vacancies in the office of town judge shall be filled by appointment of the town council, and any person so appointed shall serve until a successor is elected at the next town or general state election, which occurs first. There is also a state law that is in effect that deals with popularly, popularly elected city judges. Municipal court form provisions have been in effect in the state for a while, and it says, as a general statute, it's 1618-204, that any vacancy in the office of a popularly elected judge, which is what Judge Rothberger is, shall be filled by appointment by the governing body. The person appointed, however, may only serve until the next regular August general state election. At this election, a person shall be elected to serve any unexpired term for the full term if it's not filled at the election. So because of the state law, any vacancy can only occur until the next election. I think that makes it pretty clear in that regard, that it is an interim position until the next election occurs. So the general state law, read in accordance with our charter provision, would require that, and that's under the Tennessee Code.
And that, so I think it backs up what I was saying.
So it really doesn't, excuse me.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
It, it really doesn't require us to define interim. The position is defined already.
And it's required, because any municipal judge has to be popularly elected to be a full judge. There can be an appointment made only until the next general election by state law.
So we're not appointing an interim judge. We're appointing a judge.
That's right. It seems that we don't.
And I think that's a, a big deal.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we need a motion, because we're doing what our charter lays out for us to do.
I guess I'm, I would like to get away from the notion of identifying it as a placeholder or a, or an interim title.
Right.
To me, that just...
Follow the, and I'm, again, off the, off the title, off the, off the title piece of this.
All we're doing is appointing a judge.
That's right.
Period. Right, but if we appoint a judge...
Appoint a judge.
No, I mean, I don't mean to, that's, that's not a terrible, that's all we're doing. But that's what we're doing, is appointing a judge for a shortened term.
I think what we're trying to discuss, without being too blunt, is whether or not we're going to be basing some of our decisions on whether someone's agreeing not to run. And so, in my opinion, an interim...
Per the, per the law, we can't require...
No, no, we can't, but we can...
But we're trying to make it as even playing field as possible in 2018 when it runs. Because if you have someone that has held the office for a year and a half to two years, they can say...
They're an incumbent.
They become statistically favored.
If you have someone who has, who has said they agree not to run, it doesn't make any difference whether you call them interim or...
I don't care what we call them. I really don't.
And so I would, I'd just like to dispense with the...
I'll amend my motion, then, to not call it interim.
What, how do we retract? Can we retract?
Can I retract my motion?
You, you can just vote it down at this point, or you can remove, remove...
I'll just remove it.
Just a second also.
Same.
Okay.
So can I still ask you a couple of questions, Chris?
Absolutely, but I think it was more, not the nomenclature again, it was more the concept of trying to be as fair as possible during the next election. And of the eight candidates we had left, we have two people that told us...
It narrows it down.
They would not run in the next election. We can't hold them to that.
Right.
Purely verbal.
But we, we were trying to lay that on top of the title, and that's not what...
No, 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 I agree, I agree with you 100%.
And if we don't, if we want them to not run, that's our, we'll decide that.
No, that's my, that's my point. My point is I think this body needs to decide if that is important to us or not.
It, I don't think it matters if it's important to us, because it's, there's nothing in our charter about making sure that the next election is balanced.
That's right.
Our charter tells us to select a judge, and that's what our job is, is to select a judge. And in that process, I don't think we, and I don't know the reasons why, but I don't think we've seen a resignation letter even, to know exactly. And I wonder, is there a process in our charter that I'm not aware of, Phil, for a judge to resign?
No, it says specifically that the judge has a term of office, and he was elected to that term of office. I think that's a distinction y'all are maybe not getting in front of you here. There is a term specifically for a specific number of years that is required by your charter. This is an alternate procedure that allows for the appointment of someone to fill a position for a short term until the person can be popularly elected to fill the remainder of that term. So the person...
What would trigger that?
This question, though, was, did we, is there a process in the charter for the judge to resign?
No, he can give you a letter at any point in time.
Call me like you did and say, I don't want to do it anymore, or whatever, but I'll stay on until you find someone, please, you know, your expedience would be preferred, so...
Wouldn't it be standard, though, to ask for a resignation letter, so that everything was, everything was down, everything was on paper?
We'll do that.
When someone, when someone wanted to leave, and...
Not, not a big deal. I'm going to ask him to send an email. But let's go back to solving the problem, which is, how do we move forward? Are we comfortable now to make a selection after we've studied and hopefully talked to some of these candidates? I think I've talked to every one of them.
But that, I really wasn't done with my, with, that was, there were like three quick parts. Did we get a resignation letter? When you receive a resignation letter, how do you notify candidates that a potential judgeship is open? And what is that process? And what did we do? And, and then the next thing, we've already discussed, is do we just say, this is open? And have we done that?
Do you want me to answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, we don't, didn't receive a letter. We didn't have to receive a letter. He called, told me he resigned. I told you, if you look at your meeting minutes, I think at the last three minute meetings, I told you, he's resigned. This is how we're going to handle it. Anybody have any objections? Nobody said anything.
That's...
So you were made aware of it then?
We had, we had a four hour meeting last time.
That was the meeting before that.
It wasn't last time, it was about, it was a month ago. I mean, we've discussed this. I brought it to the council and said, I'm going to go get a list. Boyd and I are going to go get a list of candidates. And there was no objection. I brought it up again at the very next meeting and said, this is the process, this is where we are, we're taking applications, or we're taking letters of interest, we have a list, I'll bring the list to you the next agenda. That's when we started discussing. So we gave you a process. There's nothing outlined in the charter how we do or don't do it.
Well, I'd like to hear from the attorney. Is that, is...
Oh, there is nothing in the charter about how you do it.
There's nothing, okay.
Can we just clarify, too? We are not running an election. This is not something we, you know, we're, we're getting a judge to fill the remainder of our current judge. We, we need to make this decision and move on. I mean, this happens every day in Hamilton County, all the time. Judges step down and they're appointed. This is, I feel like we are dragging this out, hours and hours. Correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, but isn't this a fairly simple procedure anywhere else?
Well, it's, it's just a procedure that has to be followed everywhere else, and...
And it's our responsibility, and it's in our powers, if that's how we're supposed to handle it, but...
I think, I think it's Bo's fault.
It's my fault, if any.
No, it's Bo's fault. But, but I laud him for it, because what he's trying to do is make the judge, when the election time comes, an open election, that the people of the town can truly elect. And the history is clearly that an incumbent judge or a sitting judge has a significant advantage toward the next election. I mean, it just is. And what he's trying to do, and I, and again, I praise him for it, is trying to make it a people's election. And that's what's making it just a little bit testy and makes, makes it different than Hamilton.
I agree with that. No, but I agree with that 100%. That's where I'm, I don't know where we're disagreeing.
Can I say one thing to that point? For me, it's, it's not as much an issue of an incumbent having an advantage, it's that historically, especially in municipal judge races, an established incumbent is, is very likely to not have any challengers. Someone who's in this position for a year and a half to two years and has established the likelihood that there's going to be a, a wide field of candidates vying for that position is, is just very, very unlikely. It, it's not about the incumbent having an advantage, it's about making sure that they're, the, the quality of applicants that we have for this is phenomenal. Any of them could do an amazing job. If we have that same list of people on a ballot, our citizens have an opportunity that they haven't had in many, many years. That's, to me, what it's about, not an advantage or disadvantage, just making sure that there's an open election with a multitude of qualified candidates. I think this is the best chance to make that happen.
Is there anyone that we could, could select for this position today that would change that one way or the other?
I don't understand the question.
Is there anyone that we could select today out of this list of candidates to fill this position that would change that one way or the other? In other words, is there any qualifier that you think changes that outcome for that upcoming election? And if so, that's, that's where all my red flags go up, because that's not our job.
I don't, I don't think that's, there's any way to say someone could change that, except that it's someone who says they won't run. And that automatically creates an open position that any of these qualified candidates can qualify, run, and be elected to. Again, it's, it has nothing to do with individuals. Any of these folks would be phenomenal, would be lucky to have it.
But I think you are saying it has to do with individuals who say they won't run.
The only way to ensure that we have an open, fully contested election in a little over a year and a half is for the person who's appointed now to say they're not going to run, and that takes that completely out of the equation, and then any of these other candidates, hopefully all of them, will be in a position to run for that office. That's, that's all. And again, that is simply a recommendation. It's up to councils to decide how you...
That's why, that's why I brought it up for us to kind of decide as a body.
That's the rationale.
We don't have to. I've, I asked...
Well, we already have, though. They've all been asked that question.
Well, just when I talk to them, yes, I asked them all that question. If you talk to them, which I'm sure you did, you probably asked them a different one.
I told them that I don't think that's an appropriate question for us to ask them. And so that's why I'm wondering if the council can ask that question, and, and are we going to make this decision based on the answer to that question?
There's nothing that prevents us from asking that question, in the charter or in the law. Is there, am I...
No, I agree, there's nothing in the charter or the law.
Do we ask Carol to read the motion again, because I believe...
I took it off. I rescinded it.
Oh, you, oh, I thought you lifted it.
She withdrew it. No, took the second. I think, I was trying to go down that road to get some focus on the council as to, is that an important issue or not? If it's not, we've got eight very extremely capable candidates to choose from. I asked Bo to put a resolution together for each, depending if we decided that was important or wasn't important. I am in no way predisposed to any of this.
So how would you like to go forward?
If somebody wants to make a, nominate somebody, great. If this council would like to put it off and interview everybody, I am absolutely open. I would just ask the council that, the more we put things off, the more that backs up on our staff, and we, Judge Rothberger's asked that we would do this, and, you know, he's a, he's a giving and patient and served this town well, but I would like to respect his request to retire.
I will make a motion, then. I will make a motion to nominate Ms. Cox for our judge. She's the only one of the eight who has experience. We talked about this at the work session. She's been a judge before. We have never had a female judge on Single Mountain. She's got the experience, and I think we need balance, and so I make a motion for her. There's only two people that said they wouldn't run, and I didn't ask her. She's told me that before I even asked.
In spite of your obvious sexual, gender preference.
I was just stating a fact. I was letting the council know that that's never happened.
I will second that nomination.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second discussion. Bob, Dan?
Thank you.
I'll give you a second. This is important.
Obviously, there's, like you said, Dick, everybody here is more than qualified. I still like the idea of the placeholder being part of that decision process. There were only two that stated that they would do that. I think what Chris came up with was extremely fair in adding that to the qualification so that there is a free election in two years. And I thought we would be identifying that before we took a vote. Is that still on the table as far as the qualifications that we're voting on?
Well, I think, I, I don't think it needs to be a qualification either way. And Dan makes an excellent point that it's either in nor out. That was, again, I was trying to express, my words aren't as crystal clear as, as Dick's, but express my understanding and concern with showing favoritism during the next general election. That was brought to me by our town manager and our town attorney when we, like we started looking for candidates. So that, that was it. We don't have to, we don't have to decide if that's part of it or not. We have a motion and second on for Ms. Cox to fill that seat. And she just happens to be one of the ones that.
She has indicated she would not.
She has indicated that she would not, so I'm going to be happy because, you know, if she doesn't, then we, I think we have a more fair and open election come 2018. But I'd be happy with Mr. Humble as well, who also gave us that and, right. But on the table is a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Cox. Do we have a, not a third, do we have any more discussion? Anybody?
I, I, I mean, I, I fully support both of those individuals. This is a very tough decision and I'll, I'll just let it go.
You ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
Dan?
Well, those were the two candidates that we mentioned, even though there were more that I talked with the most and they're both, you folks are both fine for that position. I'm, perhaps I am really just thick. It just feels that the reason we're doing this, and no one has to respond to this, just want to go on, on the record, that we've said it's not a stipulation. But then we're saying, you know, a couple of folks have already said you're voting because they agree to this particular thing. And I don't know, I guess I'm just thinking on a more of the way the system works.
Dan, that's extremely fair. That is an important issue to me. And that's why I brought it up, that we have as fair as possible in 2018. Doesn't mean you have to agree with it and you can go in a different direction. That's what's important. That isn't, that piece of information is important to me and me only. I'm going to make my decision based on knowing that, not having it.
Sure, but, but we have six candidates who didn't pursue this as thoroughly because they wouldn't agree to that. These particular candidates reached out because they did agree to it. The other candidates reached out, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming, again, I can't assume someone's actions. I'd rather hear them say it. But if they didn't agree to not run in two years, they're missing out on an opportunity now to serve their community in a way that they'd like to and to, to work within the system the way it's chosen to work, which is for us to choose somebody. And I think the system is fair as it is. And it's not like you're giving them, it's not like, I don't like even the term that they have an advantage. They've worked for something once the election comes. They've, they've worked in the community and they've earned experience in doing the job and may be the best candidate at the time if they still want to run. And in a sense, I think we're precluding six other people from that. So I guess it's as clearly as I can state it. And again, I'm, I'm all okay being by myself on this. I'm just surprised.
This happens.
Yeah.
What you're saying that by us choosing them, they may be a great judge, but they still weren't elected. That's the whole point was, is to let the people decide. So I'm surprised hearing that from you, Dan, because you're very much about.
Process.
The citizens deciding.
Yeah.
And this is the fairest way to make sure our citizens.
Well, we have to do this now. This is our job. Then the election will come. So anyway.
Further discussion on the issue?
I would hope that every one of the candidates, now, just so I understand, all the candidates can technically run and there's nothing to preclude any of them, including the one we put in there to run. But that's about all I can, I, I just assumed that we would have a process where we would write down our choice as opposed to picking one and going that way. It just seems like it does exclude others. But I'll go ahead with the vote.
You ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Ready? Amy?
I'm ready.
Dan? Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Four to one, I believe.
What did you vote? I, I deferred.
Okay. Three to one with one deferral. Ms. Cox, congratulations. Thank you. I don't know the process going forward, but we'll, we'll.
We'll schedule a oath of office.
Okay. And, and I, and I do want to express my thanks to all the candidates who took the time to reach out, to send us their interest. I was, I was shocked at the amount of interest, especially for the pay and, and the number of nights and, and the work that's required. And I'm just appreciative that we have so many people that would be willing to step up and, and serve the community. And I don't think we could have gone wrong with.
Plus the time we didn't put out a notice to address one of your questions that we didn't put out.
I, I, we would have been very well served with any of them. So I really, thanks to everybody for that. Next item, ordinances. I think we got through all the resolutions, didn't we Carol? Carol?
Do we need to formally do the resolution for?
Oh.
It's in here, right? It's one of the ones in here.
Yes, I think that would be a wise idea. Thank you.
Now? Okay. Will you take the other ones so I don't point to judges by mistake?
Oh, yeah, these are all the same.
All right, next item made, did we, Carol, did I hit all the resolutions?
I'm sorry, saving?
Did I hit all the resolutions or we, did we hit two?
We need to go ahead and do the resolution for the judge.
Didn't we just?
We did that, but she didn't include the caption.
So we need to go.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Resolution 2017-09, a resolution appointing Tracy Cox as a town judge for the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one was 5-0, right? Did you vote on that one or you didn't?
Yeah, I voted on that one.
Not only was it, not, not only was it 5-0, but the two people who voted against made the nomination in second.
I know.
That was interesting. Anyway.
Because it's a different issue at this point.
No, 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 I absolutely respect, I understand what you're saying. I respect it. Thank you all for, for putting up with that. Hopefully the rest, well, actually we do have a couple of discussion items that are going to, may drag us down a little bit. But next is ordinances and we have an ordinance number.
No number.
No number.
This is first reading.
This is a first reading. An ordinance designated and, and zoning certain annexed properties located adjacent to the St. Ives subdivision on Bollinger Road as low density residential district. Do I need to read the whole thing? This is first reading, Phil?
You do not. We can tell you about it.
Yeah, if we would. Bo or, or Phil, if you come in?
Well, back we had an issue come up regarding a right of way and a request to abandon that future road right of way in St. Ives. I knew it had come up previously, so started doing some research on it to see what had happened in the past, what the issues were and what actions were taken, obviously because it had been denied. It, it came up once in 2006, 2007 relative to an annexation request. As I read through those documents, ultimately the planning commission recommended that the annexation go through, but recommended against abandoning this right of way. I continued looking into the right of way for a little bit and then it occurred to me, well, I wonder why that annexation never happened? Well, long story short, it's not too late. It did happen. It was never registered and the property still showed as in Hamilton County as opposed to Signal Mountain. But there was an annexation, annexation ordinance was passed. At the time, there was a temporary zoning designation made. But it was never formalized long-term. So we, we have all of those corrections made and this, this tract of land now shows as town of Signal Mountain as it has been. Luckily, the, the parcel that it is attached to and this annexed parcel were never developed. So there's, there's not been a lack of service provided or anything like that. It's been a, simply a bookkeeping issue and now that's been corrected. This is really the last piece in that we have to do a permanent designation for zoning. And this zoning is consistent with the properties surrounding that parcel.
One of the things you found when you did your investigation was that that right of way that was in question, that someone held title to that right of way, which is an anomaly, right?
Yes, it is.
You probably need to deal with that or have you?
We have not, we have that.
That's, that's the next step?
That's the, the next step. It's really related, but not directly.
Not directly related to this, but yeah, it, it really was.
Separate, separate property under in that.
Okay, good enough.
Require a platinum amendment to be a sealed.
So Carol Warren, agreement? I don't have to read the whole thing?
That is correct.
Okay. And we have to pass it through a vote?
Two readings, yes.
Okay. Can I get a, can I get a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? Dick?
Anything? Dan, Amy?
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading.
For the record, ahead of the second reading at the next regular meeting, we will schedule and have a public hearing as it is a zoning amendment. So that will be required. So we will have that on the agenda at the same meeting, but preceding the second reading.
On this map here, where is the county line versus the city limits?
The, the red line around the, that, the, the checked parcel is the parcel in question. That red line that surrounds it is, is the county line. So it, it sits right on the edge of the town limit now.
So this property was in the town, but not taxed, I assume?
This is.
That's a good question. Bo, can you answer that?
It was not.
It was not. Are, are we going to? Now we can.
No, we are not going to ask for back tax.
Very good.
Well, let me rephrase that. I recommend we not.
I thought we ought to clarify.
Is this, is this just vacant land? There's no houses on it?
Carol, do I need to sign that?
No.
Okay. Any other discussions? Any other questions?
Okay.
All right. Next on the list is item nine, discussion, discussion. First item is adding additional work session to the monthly schedule as Amy suggested during our last work schedule. We have any progress on that?
I had three suggestions for daytime and they were, they were all different. We have a 7:30 on the third Monday morning, 6:30 to, or 7:00 PM on a Tuesday or Thursday, and then a 12:30 on the Friday following the second Monday meeting. So they were, they were so diverse.
7:30 AM.
I was going to say seven, is that 7:30 AM?
Yes. And.
Seven, 7:30 AM on the third Monday was the suggestion.
Wow.
6:30 or 7:00 PM on a Tuesday or Thursday. And then a 12:30 in keeping with our current work session time. That would be on the Friday following the second Monday, which is this meeting.
Does that give us enough time since it's right before? It's not this Monday. It's, it'd be, it would have been last, I'm sorry. Wasn't this, wouldn't have been this past Friday. It'd be the Friday before, right? Or not?
No, it would be the, this coming Friday.
Okay. I was going to ask if it gave us time to get stuff on the agenda for Monday, but I thought you were going the other way.
So to, to answer your question, they were all over the place. Yeah, so.
What's the council's, what's the council's wishes? I think I made, I think I expressed that I really would like in this particular meeting for feedbacks, citizen feedback. Allow, allow folks to talk and have some input in this agenda session or this meeting. I think it's important. I think, you know, three minutes once a month.
I was going to suggest too, at our MTAS meeting, I was talking with Red, Red Bank's, one of the commissioners there. And I was shocked to find out that their work sessions are usually never more than an hour and 45 minutes consistently. And so it just, we were talking about it and I don't know if they have a cap or not, but maybe for this particular meeting, since it is an additional one, we put a two hour cap on it so that we are not committing ourselves to five more hours in hopes that we can. Just, just an idea. I mean, I'm not.
I think any meeting over an hour is, gets tough.
I don't, well. This came up toward, well, discussion, this came up towards the end of the meeting last time, you know. So it's something new and I had some time to think about the whole thing. And just to verify what I understood is that there would be no resident, there would be no motions made at this meeting. This is a public meeting. Am I correct?
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't determined if, if this body means it'll have to be a public.
No, but it's a public meeting, but I thought we also discussed possibly because a couple of us are self-employed people. And it's, it might not be possible to make the meeting unless you do it early in the morning. And it could be a Saturday morning. I'd, I'd give a Saturday or a Sunday morning if, if it's really necessary. But I don't see that meeting twice really is any more efficient than scheduling four and a half hours for one meeting on one day and scheduling a break in the middle of it. We're adults. We can do that. Kids do that in school every day. So anyway, I would just like to consider that. What if we just made the one longer and we were just like whip, you know, yippy? When we, it didn't take that long. As opposed to adding another meeting that might discourage people from running for the council in a non-paid position who are self-employed, who I think represent a, an important part of this community. Of the 15 houses on my street, over half of them are people who are self-employed.
So you don't, you don't like adding an additional meeting?
Well, if we do it, I think it, it could be early. I mean, that's what people do.
Can I clarify? Cause this, this was my idea and my intention was truly to, for this to be temporary, not something that we continue and maybe just for the next six months. And the, the purpose is we are so constricted about our ability to deliberate and those four hours, even taking a break, by hour three, we're hungry, we're a little edgy. It's just, we have so many things. Right now, this particular council has a lot of things before us. So my purpose was really just to give us an additional session to be able to deliberate. No voting, but be able to deliberate so that we can maybe make our next work session a little bit easier. So it's not a mandatory thing and it's not, you know, I was hoping that we could, you know, still continue to use the iPad thing so that if the self-employed council members aren't able to make it, then you're able to see it. And then bring it up in the next session. This is supposed to be a good thing. You know, like, I mean, a, a thing to help us do what the citizens have voted us to do. We just have so many things right now that we're trying to tackle that time is not permitting us to do it.
So does it make sense then that at the regular meeting, we determine for that month if we need to have that second meeting?
That's, that's one of the things I was wondering.
It's fine.
I'm new to this, but don't you sometimes schedule special budget meetings anyway? I mean, something like.
As I said earlier, you, you can call special meetings at, at any time as long as reasonable notice is given. And just like with the, the school thing, reasonable means tomorrow mornings, as soon as we can do it, we'll do it. So as long as there's advance notice of a meeting and we can post it and advertise it, it could be done and set on a, on a per meeting basis.
So Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Obviously if we don't, if we don't have anything on the agenda, there's no reason to have a meeting.
Right. Are you, are you looking for a, a motion for a time for us to meet or a date?
I don't think we need to.
Not yet.
I don't think we need to do anything that formal in my, my opinion. Sorry. I think we just need to give Bo the direction and agree as a group that we, number one, need one this month and when it'll be.
We can compromise too. I don't have any problem maybe, you know, if we have three meeting times and the, the first one we meet at 7:30, the next one we meet 6:30, and then the next one we meet, it's just, we, we don't have to.
I'm pretty flexible over the travel the next week.
An exact time for each meeting. We're going to, it's, it's meant to be a more casual.
Can we agree or disagree that we need another meeting, another work session this month?
Why?
That's my.
No, I'm saying why do we need it?
I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking, do we need another one?
I'm asking what would the reason be for having that meeting? The, the topics.
I guess we're, we're not communicating well here. That's my point. I am asking the council, do you feel we need another meeting this month? I am asking the council, do you feel we need another meeting this month?
Amy?
I don't think we need one this month.
Do you think we do?
No, I think the, part of Amy's problem is, she's using an atypical busy time as a basis for what is normal. Normally, we don't have four and a half hour meetings. That's not normal. Now, we do, and as I told you, I don't, I kind of enjoy it, so I may be a part of the problem, meetings going too long. But I, it looks like to me some of the stuff, we're clearing through. So I wouldn't think this next time, we would have an extensive work session. That'd be my guess.
Can we do this? Can we do this? Can we put off, this is just a discussion, can we put this off till just before we adjourn? Because we have at least five items that we need to make everybody aware of and talk during this public forum, and then I think we're gonna have a better idea if there are things that we may need to meet, study on, get together, meet, and make some decisions.
That was my question specifically.
And I'm okay if we don't meet.
I'm by any way, I don't care.
Just trying to give suggestions.
I think it's a great idea. If we get back, because we have gotten backed up, and I met with Boyd this week talking about this, and I think some of the comments here, we've tried to hopefully start clearing a couple of things off the docket, and that's, you'll be brought up to speed here, but we made the side, we may need an extra one this month, just to help that process along, and I just think at the end of this meeting, during our discussion period, or other business, we decide if we need an additional work session.
I like it.
Is that fair? And then we can all agree on time, because that may change.
Of course, if I may, just in the mix, keep in mind that we're looking at one, probably two, meetings with the school viability committee this week, so those two additional meetings in the next couple of weeks as well.
But that's not this body?
No, but you have some that have expressed desire to attend.
Like staff. But no, understand, understand, we need to be sensitive to that. So if that's okay, we'll wait till the end of the meeting. Let's get through, is there any other discussion? And what's, how is other discussion different for other business?
I defer to our attorney on that. I've always understood that other business may ultimately bring council action of some variety, and discussion is simply that, discussion.
Okay.
I would submit that y'all can set your agenda how you choose, and you can include the terms other discussion or other business if you wish. If you think they're redundant, let's just go to other business.
Yeah, we don't need to go down that rabbit hole now, but I appreciate that. All right, so let's move on to other business. I have a couple of things, but I'd like to go around, and I have some things that I want Bo to share with us, just so everybody's on the same page, and we all know what's going on. If you don't mind, we'll start down here, Dan, if you have any issues.
Yep, this would just be fast, that, it's appeared, for instance, Bo said maybe this was my fault, you know, when we were being mildly contentious about the judge thing, but I love this process, I want to say that. And as I mentioned earlier, Amy and I went to this elected officials academy last week, and oh my goodness, am I thankful for Signal Mountain and Boydville, after hearing what's going on in many other small towns around the state of Tennessee. When you chose, when you mentioned earlier, or when we voted on buying the truck, at no point did we say, did you get a free truck yourself because we're buying that? And those are the kinds of things that are happening on councils, there's just all kinds of stuff, so, seriously, just want to say, even though it appears that I've been almost obstructionist by being the no vote, I know that on multiple things, it's, I'm just trying to feel my way, and I left that meeting, and thank you for having us attend that, recognizing the importance of sticking to your guns on this council, you know, if you feel like things maybe should go another way, not just give in, so, so I appreciate serving with you guys. It's gonna be fun, and I don't mind four-hour meetings.
We'd like to have you too, Dan. I don't, yeah, I don't think it's a us against them sort of thing either.
Can I clarify? I don't hate the four-hour meetings, I was just trying to give us another way to deliberate, because we are constricted by these sunshine laws.
I think it's commendable that you want to do that, so...
I am fine with a four-hour on Friday and a two-hour on Monday.
Before we move on...
Just want to be clear.
Dan, anything else on your other business? Amy, why don't you hit it?
What?
Other business.
I don't have anything, I got nothing.
Bob?
The only other business I was gonna bring up, it's already been brought up by the individual on James Boulevard, there was another one on James Boulevard that also wanted a feedback sign, and you were taking care of it, so that's good.
Okay. So it's...
Oh wait, I do have one thing.
Thanks, too.
Come on, it's a nice thing.
No, go ahead.
I just want to thank Boyd and the fire, the police chief, Mike Williams, for being out there for school. I was driving my kids to school, I had asked the council, you still have a couple weeks, to go and look at the traffic problem out at the middle high school, and they sat out there in the rain with an umbrella, huddled under, you were there too, Eric, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave you out, but I want to tell you, really, it was great, and I pointed you out to my kids, and I got a lot of other parents say, hey, we saw them out there looking at it, and we don't have a solution, but I do appreciate you guys doing that in a very busy time, so, thank you.
We were actually surprised that dispatch didn't get a call about three creepy guys watching the...
I know, you guys were pretty close.
Thank you.
Anything else, Amy?
That's it.
Sure? We'll come back to you again if you need us.
Okay, I'll speak up if I need to.
Nothing. I wouldn't say a word, that would extend the length of the...
All right, I'm sorry, I'm going to. I think you guys need to study up and read the article on the de-annexation bill that Bo Watson is sponsoring in the Senate. It is not good for us, in my opinion. And I talked to Senator Watson, and he said this is very early stages, and there can be some room to work through that. And I say it's not good, because I, not because I don't think people can have, should have the ability to annex or de-annex or whatever they want on that sort of thing, I'm not taking a real hard position, because I haven't thought through it yet, but it puts us in a bit of limbo, if it becomes too easy to do, because we're talking about building a fire station. Now, we have to do it through GO bonds, if we do it through GO bonds, which is not a form that we have set up right now, then we can get reimbursed, we can send everybody a bill or a tax, they're $10,000 each household for the building of the fire station, but you have to be very specific on there. It's very early, it will change over time. He told me that TML is a large reason that they included everybody in it, and TML is one of our, they lobby for us, don't they? They'll pay him to do some lobbying, so we may want to talk to them, we have some heartache with that, but I think you guys need to educate yourself, Bo has a copy of it, if you need that, but read it and come up with any questions, so we can talk about that during our agenda meeting, and possibly a strategy, if we need to put one together. Number two, I called Bo last week, because I wanted to do a special, what do we call it?
Proclamation.
Proclamation, and I said, what can we do? Can we do, you know, we're not meeting until Monday, because, so we did a mayor-orial proclamation, which is the first time, that's what he came up with, I think it's the first time we've ever done it, but Van Smith, the UPS driver, was retiring, they had a party at the library last Saturday, so we did, kind of, he'd been serving us up here for a very long time, so we, and I think he really enjoyed that we did that, so I just wanted to let you know that, now that I know I have executive, whatever, Trump with the executive powers, yeah, never mind, don't go there.
Chris?
Can I get a copy of that for the official record?
You have, yes. Number three, I would like Boyd to give this council, because we have two known council members, since this has been going on, it's been going on probably two years now, a year and a half, and just kind of quickly discuss the timeline, we've been working with the country club to extend their lease, and this has been going on for a year and a half, maybe two years. We're finally at a point where there may be some movement on it, and I didn't want to blindside especially our new members, so I'd like Bo to kind of explain where we are in the process.
Cleve actually came a good while back and asked about extending their lease, and when I started researching that, it's something that's been in place for decades, and basically what we've done over time is simply extend the lease. There is now a Tennessee statute that requires country club golf courses that are leased from municipalities to pay a lease that is consistent with what they would pay in ad valorem taxes if they were a private entity. The town owns that property, so nobody pays taxes on it.
It's a payment in lieu of tax.
Right. So the law requires that the lease amount be basically a payment in lieu of taxes that would be the equivalent of. So we've since had the property appraised, and done the calculations on what that would be. Phil has drafted a new lease, so that we're no longer working on one from the 1966. And we've begun the process of, we have a legal description of the original leased property, and working on the conservation easement project, we determined that the, one of the fairways has grown outside of the lease area, so we had a survey done to separate that, so that's being incorporated, and we're gonna probably have to get a survey of the ball fields, playground, all of that, so we have a legal description. The original one had the legal description of the entire property, and then accepted portions that the town retained use of, and when you do the math, it comes out right, but there's not a legal description of what we're retaining use of, so we're cleaning all of that up. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll be in a position to have that to you, hopefully, maybe even by the work session, for review and authorization for execution at the next meeting.
Phil and Boyd have worked upon this, and I think all parties are very close to agreement and happy with the deal, so we'll bring that, we're looking to put two amendments still.
So if we're close to a deal, do we know a dollar figure?
No, it changes, it changes due to the ad valorem tax, but you will be provided, in the document, one of the amendments that I saw was missing, is we've got to do the, what the first-year estimated rental slash ad valorem tax will be.
Then an equation from that point forward, as to how the taxes will be computed.
So it's not gonna be a set, it's not gonna be a set number, it changes as the tax rate and as the property assessment changes, per the state law.
Yes, and that your assessor each year will determine the valuation, or every four years, evaluation of what the property is worth, and then based upon that, you can compute a rate, so that's what we've been planning on doing. And that can only be for a 20-year term under your current charter, so we've got a 20-year term designated under the document.
So, does the, maybe I'm getting too far into the weeds, but does the assessor assess it as a golf course, or assess it as property that the town owns?
Assess it as a golf course.
Okay.
The same staff that appraises the private golf courses in Hamilton County did the same for us. They appraised it as if it were not owned by a government entity.
Gotcha.
And gave us that value from which the assessment is calculated.
So the lease agreement, then, is not a negotiated amount, it is erected, and it's not negotiable beyond that?
It follows the pattern, it's different than state law requirements, yes. But, I didn't want, I didn't want to bring it to a meeting, and then you guys go, wait a minute, let's slow this thing down, it's been going on for a while, so I want to make you aware, and I think we can get anybody that would like to see a copy of where the draft is.
Sure.
Is that fair? So if you'd like a copy, just ask. Anything else on that? Boyd, can you talk about, Boyd just got, just, shoot, thank God, that's horrible, just received information back from Simplex Grinnell on the MAC sprinklers, so I'm gonna ask him to kind of update you. I suggest we don't make a decision today, because it wasn't on the agenda, but we have some updated information that we can talk about at the agenda meeting, I just wouldn't want to do anything without the MAC folks being able to be here, but if you could give us an update.
Sure. The intent was to have this as an item for this agenda, unfortunately, this came in well after the agenda had been posted. The PNA, the physical needs assessment for the MAC building, for A, the historic, original part of the building, had equated the fire alarm and sprinkler system cost to be $69,888. And in looking at it, it looks like it was simply a portioned cost relative to square When you take into account the mobilization that's still gonna exist, the riser for the sprinkler system is still gonna exist, it didn't seem to be a particularly accurate number. So we went back to Simplex Grinnell via the engineer, and asked for them to update their figures based on the original contract, one, asking if they would honor that, and they have come back with basically deducts from the original contract. The original contract was $166,424.
That includes the fire alarm, right?
Correct.
Okay.
What was that number again?
Hundred?
$166,424.
Thank you.
They have calculated a total of $74,210 that would be deducted if they don't carry the alarm system and sprinkler system through the additions part. So the total cost for putting the alarm and sprinkler system in the original school building, and being able to expand those systems into the new, if we choose, would be $92,214. So it's about an additional $22,300 more than what the PNA estimated.
And we have $35,000 continue to be set aside for, or from, the previous MAC board?
Right, it's 28.
Thirty-five.
It was 28.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But we had budgeted the entire amount.
Correct, we budgeted the 166. So the difference, if we decided to go forward, is only about 60 some, 60...
It'd be $92,000, $92,000 minus the 28 of cash, which was donated, so it'd be out-of-pocket, what, 64?
64,000 to sprinkle the front, and...
Of new money.
Right, we had 166, but that might get us retrieved to where we have time to decide the rest, and I could get behind that if...
Yeah, I would really like...
If it's, you know, if it gives us time to make the right decision and look at this thing.
Because, you know, I don't know, we haven't had a vote, and I don't, you know, all I can do is get a sense of what the council members are thinking, as far as this particular project is concerned, but my sense is that we're headed in the direction of salvaging at least that main part of the building, that's what I gather. And if that is the case, then I would like to have something going that is working toward that end, and I think that this is a logical place to start.
In talking with Bo today, I asked him, because he's been asking for 36,000 different iterations of how this is gonna work, I said, well, okay, so if we do the sprinkler and throw, and put that money in there, are we gonna have to go back in if we redo the whole thing? And the answer was pretty much no. So it's not gonna be money that's wasted in that process, but I asked him to go one step farther and say, look, if we get that done, we can now do this, use the front of the building for what we need, what would it cost just to get the theater up to usable space? If we just did those two things, that buys us a ton of time, and if it's not that expensive, you become a very usable front of that building for a limited amount of money. So I asked him, and hopefully by the next agenda meeting, he can have that amount, and I think that would show some goodwill moving forward with that, if that's, if that number's low enough.
Yeah, and to your point at the last meeting, you know, where is the money gonna come from? I mean, there's no mystery there for us, I mean, there's only one source, and if it exceeds our ability to cover it in the operating budget, we'll have to tax it.
Well, I'm more, I'm happy with my approach to that even more, learning about... about this de-annexation bill.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking about a fifth of our income on top of losing a seventh through the hall tax. If we de-annex, plus we're building a fire station, that, yes, we may get paid back for the fire station, but we've got to staff it. And we don't have your taxes to support us in that growth. And I'm not, I'm not trying to, I said-
That's a worst, that's a worst, worst-case scenario.
Right.
I agree.
And I'm a worst-case scenario type of guy?
Not, not, not likely, but-
An equal worst-case scenario would be losing the most, the building with the greatest amount of air in the community.
Fire station. We've had this discussion many times before about whether to build that station or not.
I think we have to approach-
And I think that's good faith, and I, I believe it'll be repaid.
Right. And this is, is part of the discussion still. I just want to keep bringing it up. This isn't just about us sitting here. It's about people 100 years from now.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll, I'll go follow on that hill.
I think, and my point was, we need to make, bringing up the de-annexation, we need to make sure we start putting the finance, the, uh, general obligation bond, is that?
Yeah.
GO bond? When they say GO bond, that's what we're talking about, right?
We don't really do GO bonds, but that would typically be-
We're gonna fund all those. Problem is, we'd have to. So we, so we'd have to go down through the process of doing it that way, or we can't get paid.
In order, in order to-
Correct. Correct. I mean, we, we'd be, it'd be silly for us not to do that. I don't want to take it on debt, but we have to do it that way to get paid back. Correct?
Yes. No, it says general obligation debt issued during the annex period. That's what you would get.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, thanks, everyone.
Speaking of, are we, where are we? Excuse me?
No, go ahead.
Going off like I'm in a place. Uh, Firehouse, where are we? Are we ready to issue the-
Right now, we're work, they're working on the, um, final design drawings and, not design, the architectural drawings. And we are exploring the, um, options for septic sewer connections and, and options in those regards to see exactly what we're gonna need to do there.
But not only the fire station, if, if we're gonna do any additional paving, are we planning any paving in, in either of those areas? Okay. Well, we, we're, we're gonna need to start the process of looking at financing that way. If we're gonna move forward with the fire station. Um, next, thank you for that update. Um, we have the state coming in this week and, given what their direction is on the view shed.
Next week.
Next week. We may have a solution to the, the parking issue over in Ohio, in Signal, Signal Point Park. But that, Boyd's meeting with them this week to see if they're gonna be open to that. Uh, and under the theory that, you know, we may move the trailhead to Rainbow Lake, have the larger parking lot there with the swap with the St. Charles. But we'll bring that all to the agenda session after Bo meets with the state. We'll have more information of where that is and get the council's approval and direction.
When's the agenda meeting again? Next?
Um, when is the agenda meeting, Carol? I have the-
On the 24th?
24th. So it's a week from this Friday. Okay, with all that said, do we believe we need another meeting this month, or are we okay?
Nope. I think we're okay.
I think we're fine.
Okay, good. Anything else for adjournment?
I have one thing I want to make council aware. Um, actually, pretty good segue. Generally, we try to bring any grant opportunities to council, um, ahead of time. We have had an opportunity, uh, to apply for a safer grant that would, uh, help fund, um, nine firefighter positions for a period of time, so that, uh, it would offset the cost of staffing the new station for up to three years. Um, there's not an obligation to accept should we get it, but didn't want to pass up the opportunity. So we have, uh-
What's the match on that, matching?
There's none.
No stipulations?
It's a, it's a decreasing amount over the period of years, but-
It's, uh, they change this every year, the grant guidance changes. But this year, well, it's a 2016 grant cycle, actually. It's 75% the first year for staffing costs, 75% the second year, and 50% the third year. So, and then after the fourth year.
So there is a match. Well-
There's a position, there's a portion of the salaries and all that we pay.
Right.
I misunderstood your, your question. When I think of match, I'm talking, I'm thinking more equipment scenarios.
Does this increase our budget by that 25% that we have to put up? Or is that something that's already within the budget of staff?
This, this is for staff in, at the new fire station. So instead of funding that 100%, we're funding it 25.
Awesome.
Is it up to nine or a requirement of nine?
No, it's, it's any number. Um, I, we, we discussed, you know, what staffing was gonna be. That's how we picked nine.
Okay.
Um, you know, I've known departments to get as high as, the highest I've ever heard is 21. Um, my department, close to where I came from, had 21. The littlest is two. So it's just, it's a matter, they take it by a case-by-case basis.
When you say nine, is that nine total or nine per shift?
Nine total, three per shift.
And that's, that's something people don't think of a lot. When you talk about staffing a fire station, you have three men, three people on an apparatus. That's three people on three different shifts. So simply staffing that station with three people at a time requires nine people.
That's a, I mean, that's matches our police staffing right there.
It's about a half a million.
Oh, it's, it's huge. That's why the de-annexation is gonna be a huge issue for us. Hopefully, they like being part of the town. Anything, anything else?
Linda, did you want to say anything? Or are you, are you just here to? Sparkle Day, you want to plug Sparkle Day?
Yeah, plug Sparkle Day. I'm gonna plug Sparkle Day, and-
What, what's the day?
March the 11th. We're gonna have these around. Isn't that a wonderful poster?
And Bob?
We need that built, Bob.
Uh, that's Jack Gray.
With the Lions Club?
No, Jack is an independent movie kind of producer. But he does graphics.
Did a great job. Thank you.
Kudos to Councilman Spalding, who revived Sparkle Day last year. It was a resounding success, and it's continuing. So thank you very much for taking the bull by the horn.
Thanks. We're handing that off to your-
Yeah, yeah.
So you started-
I got the, I got the easy part. Yeah. This year, we're gonna do it before the leaves come out, so you can see where all this stuff is.
So everybody, I'm encouraging girls scout, boys scout, whatever, you know, the schools, individuals in their own neighborhood, you know, you gotta team together like it says here. And then we'll be over at All House of Art and-
Behind the country club.
And even if they can't meet, they can just police their own neighborhood.
So it's March 11th, what time?
It will be-
For the record?
Starts at nine until noon.
Nine until noon?
And then at All House of Art.
So everybody, and everybody meets, and, uh, we put them into groups, and they go to different areas.
And then hopefully, there'll be hot dogs by the Lions Club at noon.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your work on that. Uh, any, anything else? We're adjourned.